I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Fine. Okay, we're on.
James, the hour at nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting over and have a little call.
Hess?
Here.
Baldwin? Right?
Here. Dean, could you leave us a word there, please?
Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, help our hearts and minds being innocent and following problems that the county has, we ask that you bless everybody here that works in the government and look over them.
Amen.
Cindy, would you like, Cindy V., would you?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that Jingle was properly posted in accordance to the opening act.
All right. Consider the minutes for the January 8th regular meeting.
I am sorry, Cindy, you sent that, I don't think I even looked at them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did I? Oh, okay.
You're right.
Yeah, you're wrong. Okay.
Yeah. And they all with your identity card.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, Cindy, I hate to do this.
That's okay, and I can fix it, because you guys will have a sign.
Okay, very good.
And I'll fix it.
Down there to the bottom on my calendar.
Uh-huh.
Pete Lively terminated with Grant County, and he's returning to K County. There's been a change.
Oh.
He can't go back directly to St. Louis.
So just, just return to K County, period with that, with that path?
Yes.
Just K County?
Just K County.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I don't know what now, now, it's been such a busy night.
Yeah, yeah. This has been crazy, altogether.
I didn't hear a motion. For the minute? I would make a motion.
I think he's still reading.
Oh, was he still reading? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Give him time.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Uh, Hess?
Aye.
Baldwin? Aye. Right?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, consider an act on the minutes for the January 8th emergency meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Going to move in second, if all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Baldwin? Aye, everybody?
Aye. Motion carries. Item seven, comments from the public.
I need a fair.
Oh, hi, do we have POs? That one I have here.
Yeah.
Okay, and then will you also bring the stamp for being in my folder where my other stamp is? All right, thank you. Mandy's bringing it, the stamp and POs.
Uh, seeing your note, comments from the public, we'll move down to item eight.
None.
None.
I'll move to review the purpose orders and travel claims.
A second.
Okay, move to approve the review, purpose orders and travel claims, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Baldwin? I, everybody?
Aye. And we will.
Sorry. Uh, you know the dates for the, for the election? Just the one from last year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mandy.
Hi, Penny.
Hey.
All right, looks good to me. Oh, no, she was just gonna see if we haven't got to it yet.
I was just having a, a long wait.
Is that a separate one?
Yeah.
That's right, so I'm gonna get rid of that, so I don't get confused.
Do you hear Shanks from Manchester?
Yeah, there was one that just went through.
Adding to the day.
No, he doesn't know. Twenty-sixth is the date, is that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We called it to walk, it's, it's, we, we, we walked either.
Yeah.
She's checking, so, they, I don't know if one's coming through today or not, but we, ours.
Yours was.
Oh, it was, okay.
And all the cessers getting Manchester, Nash, and... I don't know.
Maybe did one.
I did, I did one.
And when I was, she is there, I thought, well, they're breaking them up, and I didn't think about looking at where they've come.
Yeah, yeah. Hair blow.
Yeah. And that's all, that folder.
Amber Shepherd.
These are two separate. That's a separate one. That's a separate one. That's the only one.
It's the only one.
There's only one in there.
Alex, you know that, that PO, that paperwork I bought that you couldn't find was that, can you look on that ticket and see whether that was from a, a pipe nickel, a big line, and a Victoria, something else? Two, was it $216.15? Okay, that ticket there is coming through today. Okay, I thought that you said that we didn't have a PO for that. Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, well, I'm a little slow today, so, thank you. Okay, then we're good to go. I just thought this was, was already done, and we were gonna do the paper, so that's why I called, but thank you, Alex. Okay, bye.
She can whip those out pretty fast.
No kidding, man.
Because once you've done the files, that might be, oh, it's no big deal.
Well, she, she got that in there, and I thought this was a dud.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That being said. I'm gonna have to go back. Cindy, get you a prior two-sticker made. Thank you.
Okay, is this the one you wanted on?
Well, yeah, but, okay, there's your ticket. I didn't shoot your ticket, so that's, yeah, that's it, that's it. That's it.
That's the last one in that folder. So you had to pay for those off the state debt? I thought you found those, you bought those off, you didn't finance them, Cindy?
I, I did, but the, the company has to get the financing, and they procured the financing, and the bank sent us the check, and we had to put the check, deposit the check.
Deposit the check, ah, yeah, yeah. Instead of sending it to John Deere, they sent it to you, what a mess.
Originally, they had it sent to the dealer, and the dealer can't accept that, it has to go through directly to us.
Really? Yeah, they, they sent the check to us, but it was made out to Yellwood.
Yes, that's right. Made out to the company where we bought the mowers, P&amp;K.
Really?
Yeah.
Then I said, well, if I'm taking a check, it's gonna have to be made out to Grant County, so we sent the check back, and they sent it back to me, and we made it to Grant County, and then now we'll pay, just to John Deere or to Yellwood.
Yeah, and whoever it was, yeah, I got it. But I, we've never done that before.
Now, this is the first time, this is the, the first time since they changed that ruling, that law.
You know, that is a weird deal, because you'd think that one of the counties...
Doesn't go ahead and pay it. Yeah.
I don't know. I wouldn't think that, I wouldn't think that would be a very good thing.
Right, it'd be real.
Right.
What about our auditors? You think our auditors like that?
I don't know, that is really weird.
Well, I asked several times to Molly, because I, it didn't seem right to me.
Yeah, that's, that's odd.
Mm-hmm.
That's odd.
Molly checked on it, and he said, no.
That's why it is, huh?
Yep. Okay, since Dean was up for...
Hasn't been in yet?
Yeah, she's in.
Since Dean's up, and we've done election in that district three, if we surplus the oil track, and you're sharing it.
I will be, I will.
You don't think we can? Okay?
Do you? I don't really think, I don't think so.
Probably can't.
Because of the third district.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll be running, probably we'll run.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys?
How are you?
Cold.
It is cold.
Good morning, I'll have you sign, did you sign?
I'll have you sign. That should be this next weekend, too.
I'll be there. We made it. I'll send you right on camera.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Thanks, guys.
I saw.
Thought you guys were going to free ball.
Looks like you've got your face on the face.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You're a guest.
I'm not. Talking to you.
Are you going to go to break out? That's it? All right, there?
Yep. Anybody?
You're gonna have some block, it's here that you have to sign down here on. Yeah, you have to put it right there. Yes.
Yes, of course, today these two.
Yes. Fourteen.
Did you have any bad roads down at your place? Or did you show the eyes down that way or?
No, we were good places. Wait one day. Always the people that don't drive, worse than one of the kids. There were a bunch of them. They weren't that bad.
I worked for a guy. His daughter moved to Dallas. Well, Houston, Texas one night. And he went down there over Christmas and they had a little snow tour down there.
Oh, this is awful.
He said, you don't want to be down with them people when it comes to Dallas.
It's bad enough with good roads, isn't it?
Yes.
In Dallas.
Yes, it is. We went down there over New Years. Well, we went to the Cotton Bowl. I was a man sponsor for my daughter.
Yeah, that's the last one.
One time. And we went out to Dallas, out to where they filmed Dallas and stuff to eat. And that's where we was headed. We, it rained and iced over. And there was buses down at the bottom of this hill. And we started down the hill and you couldn't stop the bus. You put on the brakes and just slide. And the, one of the bus drivers, the front bus driver yelled back at us on our bus and said, put the bus up in the neutral and you can stop. And you did. You took it out. And it was just enough that allowed you to stop. But there was eight buses already at the bottom of the hill. And we were going down there. We was going to join them, you know? I don't know. I don't know what we, we were putting up neutral. We got down there and got around them and got up the other side. We...
JR would have pulled you out.
He would. Yeah, he would. So we spent New Years in the bus trying to get to where we was going to go eat. And we stopped at one of them eating joints that was kind of a restaurant thing. And they, three of them opened that place back up and cooked for all of us.
Wow.
Which was impressive. They just...
Cindy, if you want to call me.
Okay, we looked. I'll wait for Cindy to get motion to approve.
I would move to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented.
That's right, huh? Been moved in second. It all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob, aye.
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 Blanket purchase orders. We have one. Entertaining motion to approve.
I'd move to approve blanket purchase orders.
I'll second it. It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob, aye.
Bob.
Motion to approve.
Steven, can you come down?
Um, he went to their own party. So I'll call Steven. Hi, it's Cindy. Are you possibly going to visit about some lease agreements? She got me thinking.
Well, here's some beer. Target. We're going to try to get down here and know what to start talking about. If they hand it, all they want to do is just leave.
Oh, I think she might be. I might have. If they want to.
Morning, Steven.
Hello.
Thank you for coming down. We're down to item D. Options for lease dated three twenty-four of fourteen with Caterpillar motor graders for two of them that are approaching a maximum hour. And Dean Vike sitting in for Pat Ronk. He has resigned. And we're here to look at the options and discuss where we're at with this contract and what our options are, for sure. So, that being said, I know one of the motor graders is within real close of the hours that were stated in the contract. I guess I will turn it over to you guys to talk about what our options are.
The first one's within ten hours and the second one is within one hundred and forty.
That's five thousand hour mark.
Five thousand hour mark, yes.
So... I, I, I put together different options for new, for newer graders. To keep the ones you have, to keep the two that you have doesn't make much sense. And I've looked at, we looked at probably six or seven different options to do.
Yes.
So I brought the three that makes the most sense. But the first one, I mean, to keep the, the one motor grader that, or the two that you already have.
Uh-huh.
Here's what. If, if we were to do another two-year lease on those two, on those two motor graders, that's what each payment would be.
Is there a fee involved in, if we turn the motor graders in early under the lease?
Yes. Well, let me rephrase that. If...
Yeah, you haven't, you've read that. That, that's just a standard lease. I think the terms of what we're talking about was probably in the bid packet. Because that doesn't say, you know, that they'd be turned in a guarant. It's a guaranteed buyback, I guess, at five thousand. Is that what it is or?
Yeah.
We really need a bid packet, I think, Cindy.
When, do we know when that was?
It would say.
Fourteen? It would take a little bit to try to figure that out, but...
Yeah. You know, ask her to go look at the bids for two thousand and fourteen and probably, you know, who knows when we bid them, that, that might have been, they might have been ordered in.
Well, from the way I understand it...
Do we know where the bid, uh, bid information is?
You know, those machines are actually only by cat finance.
Like bid packets, so it would be for two thousand and fourteen?
You know, the terms were told.
Okay. We're going to use one, I just did three.
For five thousand hours.
Um, it would have been March two thousand and fourteen.
Since they are by cat finance.
Little graders.
Warren has no control over those machines as far as what penalties.
Item D, so can you see if they're down there?
Will be applied.
That's what we're looking for. Okay, thanks.
Like, we just, because, you know, we are cat financed. We're one cat. We're just dealership. So those, any penalty that would come would, would come from cat financing itself, not from Warren Cat. To get out of any of those penalties, if you were to do this, what I just showed you, or one of the other two, then what would happen is Warren Cat would buy those machines from cat finance and then we would own them. And it would buy out any penalty, anything like that, you know, from you guys. You know, you guys would be responsible for anything like that.
Yeah.
At the bottom of that first page, Steven, it said something about when you get ready, if you turn it in, the very bottom, it says returning. And I can't remember now, something about we just had to, we had to, we were responsible for hauling them there and delivery and good working shape, but I don't...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing an early retirement clause in here.
Yeah, I didn't think that.
And so, you know, we're probably liable for the contract price unless we agree to modify the contract in writing. So, I mean, we could, you can always agree to terminate them early for a fee. So that's just, it's just, what that fee's going to be, I don't know.
I think that might be, I think that might be outlined in that bid contract. Because I think when we do the, I think that's in that bid contract.
The, in the bid, um, because typically there's language in these that this is the sole agreement clause usually is in this. And so the, the early retirement clause would have to be in, in the contract.
We might have with our many, but that contract's between the finance company and the county. Not in the bid packet is the vendor in it.
Right.
So to me, you have, you have to go with what your finance contract say.
That's about the money. But like that contract is a standard, that's a state contract. We can't add or delete.
Can't alter it at all.
You cannot alter that, that standard contract. That's a state contract. And what, what you do is in your bid contract, like the five thousand hours, you know, or guaranteed buyback.
Well, then my question is, is how can cat finance charge you an early termination fee if it's not in the original contract?
You, you have to do an agreement in writing to terminate the contract early.
Oh, that's what it said in there?
No, that's, I mean, you're always, you're always free to do that.
Regardless of whether it's stated in the contract or not.
Yeah, you're always free to negotiate new terms. And the parties are always free to say no, you know? And there's, there's also an option to purchase in here. So... This started...
Twenty fourteen, fourteen.
Three twenty-four, fourteen.
Twenty-four.
Uh, we, we read that.
I'll give you that. I'll give it on the... Yeah, it's three twenty-four.
So it looks like this contract ends in March of this year. So you're just liable for the payments, the last three payments.
Do you, in your interpretation of this contract, we have one grader that's within ten hours or whatever? If we was to keep that grader in market, we're still going to pay each month for that grader?
Yes.
Yeah. And then at the end of that, then we could trade them off or do whatever?
You have to pay them off.
Pay them off.
Yeah.
Because there's a balloon payment on there.
On that?
Yeah. Hundred ninety-five thousand balloon payment on each one?
I mean, you had the option of, at the end of the lease, of turning it back in and walking away from it. I mean, you want to own it at the end of the lease.
Well, they were.
The number of hundred ninety-five thousand, I'll tell you that. And to be honest with you, these, all these right here are leases. Warren is getting away from the buybacks. We're just, we lost our deal with them because we overvalued them.
So, so we can, at the end of these three payments, we've got three payments remaining on each one of them. We think... Okay, so you got two payments left on, on each one of them. And then we can walk away because we want to pay the hundred ninety-five thousand. And then you can start all over on a brand new, whatever. You can do cat, you know, go out for bids. You can get off the state bid or whatever.
Yeah.
So we don't need to, I mean, if that's, that's one option, obviously.
It's probably the easiest.
It's probably the best.
Yeah.
And that's my question. Is that what we're paying each month versus what we're talking to the early?
Sixteen eighty-six.
Sixteen forty, forty-five. Well, this says sixteen forty-five.
There's no early termination clause in here. So you'd have to go and negotiate that. And because you're so close to the end of the lease, you're not going to have any negotiating power.
Yeah, you're talking, yeah, for the, for the two graders, for two months, two months each, that's four, four payments, that's six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. I think you're well off paying that and just walking away from it.
I can, I've got the other two options.
Yeah.
If you wanted to get out of those payments, there's, this is a machine that Pat likes to use. And then this is a machine that Dean and I discussed.
So if we, if you turn it back and go with this option here, then we wouldn't have that, that six thousand dollars, but you're going to be back.
But you wouldn't have to make next to us.
But, and this is off the state bid. This is a state bid.
On state contract.
State contract.
State contract.
This is a state bid. So one of them's a two thousand nineteen model, one's a two thousand eighteen model. One's a twelve M and one's a one forty.
Well, the twelve M is actually higher than the one forty.
Different type of one forty?
A different type.
We have, I think, well, at the last, uh, that commission meeting I was on, we, we had the motor grader, it's an Allo-Rack motor grader. So it's, we went, we moved it back to the steering wheel. And it's just like the, the old age sort of. So you can get them both ways. You can get them with the joysticks, like what you've been buying.
Yeah.
Or you can go back to the Allo-Rack. Just kind of those.
Did you change the one forty? I know the one forty, I didn't have very long. It was just a little underpowered. And I took the bigger one.
Did you have, was it a panel we went to all wheel drive?
No, I had an all-wheel drive. We just, we just had a little power problem with not being able to pull the ditches and stuff. It was heating up and some different issues. So we, I, I'm just curious if it's a different model, the one forty or the twelve M?
Twelve M was a smaller machine than the...
Excuse me, that's what it was.
So, so you had twelve before?
And I had a little one.
And the reason, whatever Pat and I were talking about all this, the, you know, because he had, you know, the, the other two machines that you're turning back in are one forty all wheel drives, one forty M twos.
Yes.
The new M three model. So the twelve M three is pretty much identical machine as the one forty M two. And that's why we decided to go with the twelve M three is because it's pretty much the same thing, same machine's got. And the new one forty M three is bigger than the one forty, than the one forty M two you should have now.
What's the difference?
As far as horsepower and, you know, and with all the new technology, everything and the ways they get the power to the ground. Just say that one, the twelve M three is just a factor with one forty M two.
The one, one, how much horsepower more does the one forty is in three share? The bigger one, but...
I don't know. It's hard to top my head.
Okay, so the one forty M three is the bigger machine now, yeah. And then the twelve, uh, M three is the same as the one forty M two.
But the, the twelve M three you're quoting here is a two thousand eighteen.
Well, even, I mean, even if you, that, that's just a, a generic price off of the two thousand, you know, I mean, if I brought you a two thousand nineteen, which more likely I would, it's still the same price.
And we don't need insurance because we get our insurance through ACCO, so...
Well, I guess Dean, you're gonna have to decide whether he wants to kick two graders or whether you wanna get, you wanna just do that option. One, when we get out from under him, go ahead and go to the end of the contract period and turn him back and then if he...
In the meantime, can, since he's the deputy, district deputy, can we buy, can we, obviously these are gonna probably be served, returned back. I'm gonna assume that's probably, we'll probably need to make a legal decision on that, but can, was it okay to go out for bids for new graders?
I, I mean, this is, um, I mean, you, uh, there's, uh, you know, I, I don't know that you can declare them surplus, but you're always free to trade them in.
You have to, you have to declare them surplus before you can trade, before you can trade. So you have to, that's the proper procedure, you have to declare surplus before you could talk about, yeah, and, and then you dispose of it. That's two processes once you do. But what I'm saying is, he's not locked into CAT for a CAT. I mean, we're obviously gonna end the end of this lease is, um, March or April first is the end of this lease. And we got a lot of options, we can go out for bids or we can look at all the state contracts on any grader. But that ain't a problem because the special election is what I'm asking about.
Right, yeah.
Is that, that's what I'm, is that a problem? Because Max and I obviously are succeeding ourself, there's no problem there.
Right.
And it's technically, even though it's a district three piece of equipment, it's actually owned by the county in the county name, you know? So there shouldn't be a problem legally on that, would there be? That was, that's my, that's my legal question.
I understand the surplus.
But, but distributor truck too.
Yeah, right, we'll do the same thing, so...
You know, it's, needs to be surplus and something too, so...
District one and district three owns this old distributor truck. And with Dean being, that position being up for election, can I surplus that truck and sell it the option?
You know, um, I would feel better if, um, you know, he just abstained from the vote. If you both agreed on the vote, um, you only have to have two to have a quorum. Um, neither of you are running for an election, so if one of you, uh, surplus the equipment, um...
And then, and then vote on it and abstain and this, yeah.
I think that would, I think you'd be okay.
Okay. Are we gonna be in a problem with these if we turn these graders back? Uh, that being district three will do that the same way, that Dean abstains and Cindy and I vote on it.
He just voted on, if you, Cindy, you, Cindy, he just abstained, you and Cindy vote on it. If you both agree, then, uh, I think clearly then, um, then that's not, that's not, we don't run into an issue there if he abstains.
Okay.
Legally, do you, do you not think that that's our best option is just to let this expire and try to redo anything with it? Pay our payments and expire?
That would be the cleanest, that'd be the cleanest way, is just hang on to them, pay the payments, let it expire, and then just get the graders. And you could go after the graders anytime you want to.
Look at the state bids and what they're looking at.
Well, I know you've put a lot of work into this to come up with these, we appreciate that very much. We're trying to just get to the bottom of how we're gonna handle this legally and not get anybody in trouble.
All right, I understand. I don't wanna go, I wouldn't go be in trouble.
We don't want nobody in trouble.
I know, he's got a wife, he probably isn't in trouble enough as he is now here.
All right, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Chad.
Do you guys want this back?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think we ought to make the decision on Dean, the options for the lease dated, I, I think we ought to, um, run the lease out and make sure we turn them out.
Go ahead and make sure that we don't.
Go over the five thousand, keep them, keep that one.
It's just gone.
Yeah, and then that other one, whether it's got five thousand hours or not, you need to have it turned back by whenever it says April first or whenever the contract ends.
March, end of March.
Yeah, I don't see. You know, it's not the twenty-fourth, probably earlier or later, make sure we're not...
Just call, call them, make arrangements to turn it.
The one grader that's up within ten hours, we took down. And we had him sign that, you know, here it is.
It's already there.
Yeah, I mean, it was within ten hours.
You didn't wanna use it anymore.
No, I didn't wanna use it anymore.
But you haven't officially turned it out.
I mean, it's, physically it's the warranty cap. Do you want me to go get it?
I've called the, I, you know, I called the lease company, find out how to turn them in and, uh, follow their instructions, you know, how to turn them in. That might be, uh, an appropriate way to turn them back to them.
Well, okay.
Uh, just contact them and find out how they wanna turn it back in.
We took it down there, it had a steering issue as far as being, and they were gonna look at that while it was still under warranty. And, uh, but it is sitting down there physically, but I mean, uh, they were going to look at that issue for, so it'd be good before we turned it back in.
Okay, so we need to just, uh...
Well, I'd make a motion to let the lease agreement dated twenty-fourth of March, twenty fourteen, between the Grand County Board of Commissioners and Warren, uh, Power and Machinery Company as the leaseor that is due to expire in March of twenty nineteen with five thousand hours or less, to let that, um, expire and turn the graders back at that time. Direct Dean by to get in hold with them to find out how to, what the delivery and return of the equipment entails to make sure that we, uh, adhere to that contract.
I will second that motion to turn, go to the end of the lease and then instruct Dean to find out how to return the machinery.
Okay. Probably you need to, I would think, put this back on the agenda for next week to declare the, the item surplus. Put it on the agenda for next week, and then he just abstained from the vote.
Abstained from this too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, have a vote?
Has.
Yes.
Bob has?
Yes.
Bye?
Abstained.
Motion carried. And then put that back on the agenda.
For surplus?
For surplus, and we'll do the same thing with the, with the oil cut.
Okay.
Then, then you guys probably need to put it back on the agenda for next week also to either go out for new bids or to look at purchasing from state contract.
We actually have that on here this week, look at lease and purchasing of two more grades, we're gonna decide what we wanna do. So, we haven't got a bid packet put together per se, we just, we don't know what to do. So we gotta go on the agenda to try to figure out what we're gonna do. Okay, here's a copy of the, yeah, February twenty-fourth, we bid.
Right. Was the date on the actual bid packet.
Okay.
I looked. Maybe page through that, I think, maybe, uh, March the seventh.
March seventh, and we opened them, well, yeah, well, opened them March tenth.
Yeah, yeah.
March tenth, okay. That's, yeah, that isn't the actual bid, but that's a copy of what it was. You probably keep that at your record.
Well, and that's good to know, I mean, to know that, that's, that is the easiest way to do it, just turn it back.
I think so.
At the end of the lease, which we was trying to save the county that six thousand dollars or whatever. But that may be cheap in the long run, just to get, cut your ties and stuff. And you don't know, like you took, you said earlier, you may not need two graders, you may need one or something.
Give us some options.
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you, Stephen, I appreciate it.
At ten fifteen, the Lamont Fire, our fire, our police department should be here, so...
That's two, twelve minutes.
Okay, okay, I'll be back.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We need to get Scott in here, look at that chair, Stephen's gonna get cut dirt and stuff.
Uh, yeah, it's pretty dirty, probably from all the activity.
That's what I figured for that. We don't have near as many wires and lights or put back up now, so...
I think we'll stay here this weekend, so he tried to clean up, so he probably just didn't see, and I didn't see that either, so...
Yeah, that's good. Okay, item E, all districts lease, purchase and two or more graders. Do we wanna make a decision on this right now or do we wanna put it?
Well, I was just gonna give you the some information. Today, Komatsu is bringing up a brand new grader to, for demo, to, gonna, it'll be later today. And then some guys are gonna come up tomorrow. Max, if you or anybody from your crew wants to come up, Dean, you and any of your crew, they're gonna be there just to, um, we've been very, it's been long, we've never had a Komatsu grader since I've been commissioner. We've got a couple of pieces of Komatsu, we've got a loader, and we really like it. I'll tell you what, and my mechanic thinks it's, uh, it's easy to service, and we just haven't had many problems with it, we've had it a couple of years. So, I just thought that might be an option. I know what the cats are doing and I know what my deers are doing.
Who's there at what time?
Nine thirty, fifteen, nine thirty at my shop. So, bring anybody you want over, and I think they're gonna leave it here a few days for us to run, so we can figure that out. You know, today, everything is on state bids. Um, and the big thing we used to have on state bids was, if you wanna trade anything else, it's kinda hard to get it on, you know, do it on the state bids because you don't know what your trade-in value is, you know, that's a hard part. Your, your financing, obviously, they, they have been able to do that for us, but the trade-in is still, I, I, you're not gonna have to worry about trade-ins. If I've got a, I've got a couple of graders.
On your loader that you have, have you had any issue at all?
We've had very little. I can't even think, I can't even think that we've...
What has the service response been to it?
That's the problem, we haven't had to have them. I mean, we've had, we, um, we haven't had to have them come do anything. So I don't know what the service is gonna be like, we haven't had any problems, so, um, and we've had it a couple of years.
And talking to the guys, they said, yeah, we've had Komatsu before, they had them, and they said the only thing that they were concerned about was that they was in Oak City.
Well, CAT, yeah.
And, and he's, but, but it's, on the other hand, they said, but, you know, we've done a lot of things down to Oak City too, so it's not really...
Yeah, I, I get that, CAT, it seems like even though they have a deal in Enid, it seems like we, we, you know, mechanics are just kinda naming their own price and they're just not everywhere, that's the problem, they're not, it's what, it's the mechanics that they get, that you have to have a lot of faith in. I'll tell you, our John Deers, the last two John Deers we bought from day one, we had nothing but problems with it. We had four hours on it and it sat for six weeks with four hours on it, and John Deers didn't service us. I finally had to get them, and in our, in our bid packet, it says if it's down for so long, they would provide us a free one. Well, we had to remind them of that several times before we got one.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, but I've got, uh, one of my graders has over eighty-five hundred, and I've got another one on us at six thousand and another one at fifty-six hundred. So, I'm looking at maybe two graders, so... And I don't know if you go out on bids, if you, of course, the, the thing is, when you bid, we always bid one or more. Doesn't mean that we all have to agree on the same grader.
Right.
You know, I, one time, I think I took one of each, just because I wanted to compare them, I took one of each.
Yeah, you took one John Deere?
And I took, yeah, that one time. And part of it was the, the trade-ins too, I got more on one than I did the other one for the other one, so, you know, there's a lot, what is best, so...
We've had, you know, very real problems with John Deers, CAT, what we've had is, um, giving us fairly good response on, uh, service, you know, so, uh, but I've heard a lot of good things about Komatsu too, so...
It's just another option.
Yes.
Just another option.
Okay, very good, thank you. So do we want to, uh, I mean, we're not absolutely ready to do this right now, so let's put this back on the agenda and maybe that'll give us time to look at these Komatsus or whatever.
Yeah, give us a couple of weeks, we're gonna run those a week or so, give us a couple of weeks to run them and, and, uh...
So give it a couple of weeks on the agenda or put it back?
Yeah, before you put it back, um...
Yeah, the twenty-eighth of January would be two weeks.
We don't need on the twenty-eighth of January.
We don't.
Why? What did I do?
We have four meetings already and I think that's what you said, a round meeting on the twenty.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So maybe February, uh, fourth or, or like twelfth, because the excise here is on, is, is, yeah, the eleventh. Because then, one day is the, or the president's day, is that the eighteenth of July? The eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen.
Yeah, so let's put on the agenda for the eleventh of January, and see if we wanna do a bid or, or what we wanna do, maybe by then we'll probably have an idea. Yeah, there could be two.
Okay. I don't see anybody here from the Lamont Fire Department yet, but that's not ten fifteen either, so we'll skip over that, go to item G, resolution twenty nineteen dash three for the Fair Board, election of officers for position three, terms expire from February twenty nineteen.
I typed this up, but we don't have to do this, but it at least shows who you can lock position.
Oh, we like that.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Jimmy Vardy for District One, Lacy Raymer for District Two, and Darren Schultz for District Three.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, it does to me too.
So they're gonna, they're gonna file?
We, we need to talk to each one of our representatives and make sure that they're gonna file again and not find somebody that would file for that. Uh, providing there's more than one, we'll have to have an election and that'll be listed out. That election will be February the fifth, Tuesday. That election will be February the fifth, Tuesday, between seven-thirty and one, at District One, District Two, or District Three shops.
And we run those, Dean, if we have an election, we actually run those elections, uh, the Election Board does not. The Election Board provides us a list of our, uh, people that vote within our district, so if they come in to vote, you have to have an identification, and then find out if they live in that district and our district.
Do you have copies for each?
And then, you put, you gotta have a box, and she'll, she's really good, she's loaned me boxes before, the lock boxes that you can lock the ballot in. We usually had the clerk's office make our ballots up.
I have all the stuff, I have the actual reports, I've got them out, so, yeah, I'll take care of all that.
So, we have to, she'll help us with that, if we have to have an actual election. It's been a while.
I need, I need to get a hold of Darren.
You need to get all the Darren, and make sure he knows if he's still interested. Tell him his, his position is up, and if he's still interested, he needs to file, um, January twenty-fifth through February first.
First, yeah.
So.
Now, do we publish that in the newspaper, or?
Yes.
This notice, or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The elect, actual election's gonna be?
February fifth.
February the fifth.
Yeah, and it tells you on this paper here, Dean.
Okay.
This paper here.
I'll, I'll email you and carry a copy.
Let's see, you're gonna, you're letting them file six days, 'cause you're having them start filing Friday through Friday? Yeah, but five, you're having, you're having them file Fri- Friday, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of next week? Or are you gonna close it on the thirty-first? Is there a reason you did that one?
Not.
You wanna change that to the twenty-eighth? All right, it doesn't matter, what do you wanna do?
Let's see.
You only need five days, five days.
Oh, and it says five days, I need to make it five days.
Yeah, right, so you, you've got six, you need to take one day off, neither, neither take, shorten it a day, or?
To February the fourth.
All right, no, you need to either take the first off, or the twenty-fifth off, that Friday.
Okay, 'cause I have it as what now, I have it as?
You have it as February twenty-fifth, or January twenty-fifth through February first. Cindy, you probably have it, let it close on the thirty-first, that way, people know on the, by the end of the thirty-first that day, because it's, if it's an election, they need to probably get people out to vote. Gives them that weekend to make their calls.
There you go, okay, so.
So, why don't you change that to?
Okay, let me have Mindy come through quick.
To, and ends on January thirty-first.
Okay.
That might be a better deal.
Okay, that's, it'll just take me a second.
Yeah.
Hello, can you come here for a minute, I'm gonna change that thing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bye.
Five one, somebody, that's five eight. Okay, if they're gonna, if they wanna do it again, do it, what'll be the election?
Yes.
It is, if nobody else files, they're, they're in. But if someone files, then it's an election. But you need to tell them they need to be up here.
Right, 'cause this is the one they fill out for.
Yeah, they gotta come up to the clerk's office to fill that out.
Do you want that paper to take?
No. I'll be right back. We're on the Fair Board election.
Okay. Well.
She's gonna change this, uh, dates on the filing period, and then bring it back in, and then we're gonna sign it.
Okay.
We can go ahead and vote for it.
Okay.
Uh, I entertain a motion to approve that resolution. Aye.
Oh, Max?
Did I make the motion?
Yeah, you did make the motion. You always said I entertain, I guess, I entertain.
Well, I entertain it doesn't mean I made the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so who wants to make the motion?
Well, I, I'll make the motion, that don't matter. And then, by executive, we'll have all in favor.
Max?
Aye.
Cindy?
Dean?
Aye.
Motion carried.
See, did we get any bids on?
Item A, opening considered the bids received for the bid number twenty-eight of twenty-eighteen, the Election Board ballots. She's probably just zipped in, or probably didn't.
Right.
We haven't looked at them yet, so we're officially opening now. Whoa. Guess she got them, yeah. Bid number one is from Tulsa County.
I bet it's a no bid.
He's not very fast.
I say they're usually no bid.
Yeah, there's some folks standing out there, I don't know who they are.
Go over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a no bid.
No bid.
Yeah. Okay, the second one is?
Is that them?
No, it's the electric guys. Royal Printing Company, and they have listed out, uh, regular ballots are fourteen cents. That's eight by five by fourteen, eight by five by seventeen is fifteen cents, and eight by five by nineteen is fifteen cents. And absentee ballots are the same pricing.
Put those down.
Okay. Yeah, they handed me one.
Oh, here, it's the last, I was looking for the dollar amount. This is for Midwest Printing.
Midwest Printing is the third. And they are eight by five by fourteen, fourteen cents, eight by five by seventeen is fifteen cents, and eight by five by nineteen is sixteen cents. The absentee ballots and the sample ballots follow the same.
So, I suppose we need to ask Robin.
Yes, we do.
I suppose, uh, actually, the, uh, roll printing is cheaper, aren't they, because of the eight by five by nineteen?
Right. If we use them ballots.
Yeah.
Uh, let's, let's call Robin and find out.
Yeah, that'd be cheaper, the, the, this one would be cheaper, the sheet roll printing, I'm sure she's good with that.
What do you?
That other bid.
Obviously. Robin, can you step into the boardroom, we opened the bid for the ballot purchase? Oh, I need to call Robin Rags. I'm sorry. Brenda, can you send Brenda in, please? Thank you. Okay, bye-bye. I called Robin here. I guess Robin is not here today, but Brenda is, so we'll have her come in.
Come in, Brenda.
Hi, Brenda. We opened the bids up for the balloting, uh, printing, ballot printing, and if you could come over here, we'll, uh, Mindy will show you the deals. The eight by five by nineteen is sixteen cents on Midwest Printing, and eight by five by seventeen on Royal Printing is fifteen cents. So, they would be a little cheaper on that, on that size ballots, the other prices are the same.
Yeah, we usually got, we have the mid.
Yeah, I knew they had, and they're one cent higher on their, on the nineteen-inch than they are on the seventeen-inch. I don't know what you guys normally use. But we'll refer to you guys for a recommendation of which one.
But you have to, a reason why, if it's higher, you, you've got to reason.
Uh, we could go with the, with the cheaper.
Okay. So, we'll go.
I don't see why not.
Okay. Your motion is to go with Royal Printing.
Her suggestion.
Proceed, you have to.
I would make a motion to accept the bid twenty, whatever.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen, for Royal Printing, due to the cheaper bid, and on, it was a recommendation of Brenda from the Election Board.
Do I have a second? Hold a second there. Okay, been moved, accessible?
Thanks.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, that's all we needed, thank you very much. And you've got the reason why it was cheaper, okay. Uh, item A, allocation of alcohol beverages tax for December twenty-eighteen, fourteen thousand five ninety forty-five. Wow, that's, uh, impressive, isn't it?
Pretty good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we, we. Make a motion to, not wait for that. I'm asked to confirm. Yes.
I need to, um, approve the alcohol beverage tax. And now, the fifteen, that's up, forty-nine forty-five. And, and the, is that all, is that one more, or is that, is that, okay, there's, yeah, there's two of them, okay, that's the alcohol, that, that, to approve the alcohol beverage tax for twenty-eighteen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Bob, for a head?
Aye.
Stop it?
Right.
Aye. Oh, ballots are hard to write.
Motion carried.
Um, I'd make a motion to approve the mortgage tax certification fee for December twenty-eighteen for fifty dollars.
I'll second that. Well, that's not the mortgage tax fee.
Uh, we've undone, it was with.
Oh, that was the other, okay. Okay, let's go back up to, uh, item F.
Oh, did we do it, we didn't do the I on the last one?
Oh.
Test?
Yeah.
On the mortgage certification fee?
Aye.
Bob?
I.
Fight?
Aye.
Motion carried, sorry about that, thank you. Now, let's go back up to item F. To the Lamont Fire Department in town of Lamont, to annex one point five.
Lamont Pe- Police Department.
Police Department, excuse me. Lamont Police Department in town of Lamont, to annex one point five miles of Ellis County Road from Highway seventy-four running west to the Lamont Cemetery, and the old Highway seventy-four, one mile south from Dewey Road to Custer.
Got some polls for you guys?
Yeah, you want to, Stephen Young and Cindy, I, I've got mine that you brought me, so, just I wanted them to have their copy.
You want theirs?
Yeah, thank you very much.
I don't think I know you.
I'm dusting music.
I'm Cindy Pratt, I'm the county court.
Music.
Dusting music.
I apologize for running behind, had vehicle trouble, and then I went to the wrong building, I didn't know your meeting was over here, so I apologize for that. Basically, what we've, what we've got here is, um, the town is interested in annexing. We already have Ellis to State, but we only have half of the road to the yellow line, and we don't want to, uh, wind up in a jurisdictional battle, right, so I'm gonna take it going in the wrong lane, number one. I don't know that we'd ever have that problem, but we also know that since they've figured out how to get pavement from Ellis, all the way to Medford, if you take the right roads, that we feel like we may be having some, uh, some drug trafficking going through there, and we'd like to concentrate on that over in that area, as well as us connecting us to the cemetery, which is, we're gonna try to plan on annexing that in later down the road, so we can patrol it. What we'd like to do is, uh, also with the same thing on that old Highway seventy-four, the one that's basically just shut down there, going down to that Silver Bridge down there, that old bridge that's been shut down, we have a lot of activity down there, late at night, and at different times of the day, some are fishermen, some are not, and we'd like to be able to go down there and, uh, check on what's going on, uh, simply because of the fact that we have our water treatment plan on that road, as well as all three of our pump houses. We've been continuing to mow that area, to get to it, to get to our pump houses, and take care of that maintenance-wise, uh, and we know that there's never gonna be any road repairs, or things like that, or bridge repair in that, in that area, due to, it's just a, a dead road, for lack of a better word. So, we'd like to annex that in just for patrol. And the research that I have done for annexing, basically, it boils down to, uh, what kind of agreement we can come to. If, if you, if you agree to the annex, then it comes down to what kind of maintenance we're going to do, what kind of agreement we're gonna have. Now, you know, just a straightforward annex, we annex the property in, we're responsible for bridges, roadways, mowing, all the maintenance. Now, what we've, what we've done with ODOT is, uh, we've annexed some areas in with them that went into, uh, went into effect on Friday. Basically, we, we mow it, and then they take care of the roads and the, and the bridges, and then they do any drains that's over twenty feet wide, like over, and things like that. And we'd like to work out that same kind of arrangement with the county in these areas, so that we can get out there and do some police work. So, basically, it just boils down to if we can come to that agreement, and like I've mentioned in the email before, Ms. Bob, if, if we can't come to that agreement, of course, our town can't afford to fix those bridges or that road, so we, we would abandon the proposal, because of just the feasibility, it's not, we're not looking to make money off of it, we don't see it as being a, a money-making process to go out there and work it, it's just a, it's just the ability for us to stop crime from happening in that area, so.
Have you looked into an interlocal agreement with the county sheriff to monitor those roads?
Oh, yeah, they don't have a problem with us going out there, Scott's never.
Right, and, and how the interlocal agreement works with city jurisdictions and the county, there's not actually necessarily anything that's in writing. Their council just has to give their officers permission to go outside their city limits if we request.
Yeah.
Well, the, you know, um, you know, if you, you ended up stopping somebody who had, you know, trafficking weight or something, and that would end up in my office upstairs, I mean, the defense council's gonna wanna see that policy in writing, and if there's not.
Well, he calls us and says, hey, there's a vehicle sitting out here, it looks suspicious, my deputies all the way across the county, and we request him to go out. So, at that, at that moment, he's now acting as, undermined jurisdiction authority.
But we oughta have a written document, we have a written document on all of, that, that is an agreement, and it has to come before the Board of County Commissioners, you can't have a verbal, it has to be written.
Well, that's, that's per state statute. State statute says interlocal agreements between law enforcement is, is on the city side, not my side, there's nothing. They're the ones that have.
Oh, so they have.
They have, they have permission from their city councils to go outside of their jurisdictions if I ask them to.
Right, but, uh, what I'm saying is, is, defense attorneys are gonna wanna see that in writing, so it needs to be, it needs to be in writing at some one time.
Is that part? We have the regular annual interlocal agreements that we have with all the cities and towns, does that apply, or is that going to be accepted?
We have an interlocal agreement with the city, but would that, would that spill over to the police department? You know, we have that.
Yeah, that's a real work.
Yeah, that's right, that is, that is, that is, that is different. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, basically, what, what he's talking about is really all we have the jurisdiction to do is if they, if they call us for backup, or we see a suspicious vehicle, we, we, all we can really do at this point is detain, so it would literally be their case, they would be, they would come out, they would process everything. We are, we're, we would be acting as, as a deputy, but on the authority of the Sheriff's Department and the permission of our town to come out and assist them. It's not really a, it's not really a mutual aid agreement, it's just a, it's just a common thing we're allowed to do through state statute.
Right.
You, I think you guys. Uh, you, I think you guys are talking about.
But, 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 I mean, you could have an agreement where it's okay for you to patrol that area.
Mm-hmm.
Because, I, I mean, just, just because the county has limited numbers of deputies and, I mean, we, there's just no way, you know, we could, we could have someone out there patrolling that area. Um, so, I mean, you could, I mean, without having to go through the annexation process, you can just do this with an interlocal agreement.
Hmm. That could happen. The only thing that, that that would prevent, it wouldn't allow you to obviously write a city, a city speeding ticket under that agreement, but.
So, that means?
If you're not, if you're not wanting to use this for anything.
If it was in, if it was outside the city, you could still have authority to write tickets and, and do that stuff.
Don't think state statute will allow that, will it?
Not run through their city court, no.
No.
No, not to run through the city court. It'd have to be turned up in district court.
Yeah. Well, the only downside I can see to that is that, say, we, we catch a bunch of misdemeanor drug possessions out there, then we, then we've got a bunch of misdemeanor cases filling up your courtrooms. You good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It's for drugs.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing drugs, if they've got possession of drugs, they probably deserve it in my court, so.
Can't argue with that terribly. Uh, okay. Um, so then, what you're suggesting is that we get together with him and do a, a written agreement of some sort where we can patrol out there?
Yeah.
If you're looking for drugs, especially, now, Scott, I don't wanna upset your family, but.
There's probably a lot of underage, uh, kids out there is probably what your concerns are, so we're probably looking at a lot of juvenile delinquent cases.
Well, what he's talking about is now that the road, the road is now paved, that people use it instead of the major highway more than they would.
For trafficking.
Yeah, because they know you don't have the deputies to get out there and, and patrol that particular area.
So, Scott, you've got a drug dog, right? So, you're suspecting that, that could help you tremendously. You think someone's on drugs to call for backup, 'cause your dog can walk around a vehicle.
Right.
And give you a reason. Right, I don't know enough about it, but.
Well, well, and that's true, that's true. Uh, the problem with that is, is we can only detain them for a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah.
And so, if his deputy, if, if the dog's even on.
The dog coming from Medford on a regular traffic stop to Lamont would definitely be with the, outside that reasonable range of.
Time.
Yeah, so we couldn't hold him that long.
Basically, you need to have a dog available, probably within the normal around, amount of time it'll take to run traffic.
Mm-hmm. Write a citation.
Write a citation, anything outside that scope, you're probably pushing the envelope as far as being, um, detained too long.
But, Scott, do you see that as a doable deal to have an interlocal for the drug part? Do you see that as a, as a workable deal?
I mean, I think we could probably come to some sort of agreement, but really, it's not gonna be a whole lot different than what it is now, so.
Yeah.
But it would be something in writing that.
Right.
That we could, could look at and do.
It would give him power to enforce the other side of the road, wouldn't it?
The only problem with the interlocal, and here's why, here's why I like to do it on a case-by-case basis, is because they, he sees a vehicle out here, he says, hey, there's a vehicle out here, where's your deputy, or I can check on it. Well, uh, we're on the other side of the county, yeah, please check on it for us. Okay, from that moment that he gets our okay, anything he does, I'm responsible for. So, if he gets into an officer-involved shooting, if he violates somebody's rights, that's on me. That's why I don't just have blanket, take care of anything you see. You see what I'm saying?
Couldn't you, couldn't that be? Okay, couldn't, couldn't that be part of your deal, that you still have to call to, to, to get that?
Well, I mean, sure.
Would that be?
But I'm just explaining, you know, about fifteen years ago, you know, there's probably three hundred people in the county that had a commission card. Well, you know, technically, you're there under your, you're responsible for everything they do with your card, so. But, yeah, we can put something in writing.
That you're comf- that you're both comfortable with?
Sure.
Okay.
Does it need to come back to the board?
It'll have to run through our board and your city council for approval. And, and that way, then, you don't have to go out and get, you don't have to go out.
Essentially, we'll just draw something up that'll work for every.
That way, you don't have to go out, and you don't have to get agreement from landowners or anything.
Or have a pub- little public hearings and, yeah.
We, we wouldn't have to do that either, uh, i- if we did the annex. Uh, since we're only doing what's called a fence line annex, it, it, the property's all yours. So, you would be the owner people.
Techn- now, technically, the landowner owns it to the middle of the road, so you, you have to have permission of the landowner.
Yeah, you have to have certified, even on that, you have to send certified land notices to every landowner that, like, on your hot, you said you did that with ODOT, so at ODOT's deal, you had to send a certified letter to every landowner and to ODOT, and then they all have time to respond. And then you held a ho- public meeting, and you should've gone through that with ODOT if you're saying that you've done the highway. So, you know, and have you had your public meeting on that yet?
Yeah, yeah, we already voted it in last month, and then, of course, when you vote in ordinance, it has to be published in the paper, and then you have a, an ordinance has thirty days before it comes into effect, so it just.
But you had your pu- you posted public meetings and had people come and.
And we, and we had the plan like this, posted at our town hall for public viewing as well.
Well, I'd like to see that in, you know, in writing, if you guys can get that worked out, that'd be great.
I can help with that if you need help.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you taking your time to come up here today.
No problem, I appreciate you folks taking time to hear me.
I'll get it.
Yeah, sounds good. I'll leave y'all to it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Stephen, for your guidance. Appreciate it. Come down to item K. Uh, officers' reports for December eighteenth, for Assessor, County Clerk, Court Clerk, Election Board, Health Department, Sheriff, Treasurer, all subject.
Just getting me on the, the roads. And I'll draft one for you guys.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
This is the, the key paper cliff. Hold on, did you?
For all these reports.
We've got all the responsibilities.
Ooh.
The golden cliff. Yeah, golden cliff.
Tell by your face that one.
That can be one of the. You respond to.
This thing, we do these every month. It's subject audit, they have cash accounts that they take money and officers.
There's nothing required on my side.
There's those books in my office account, and they're, they're, um, you have the math I found over there. She's, she sells those with the, the books they have. They sell them, they collect the money all month, and then, at the end of the month, they have to take it out of the cash account and put it into a regular account, so they can spend it. So, that's what you see, that's what we're doing on everybody's office. So, that's the, this is gonna be city press office. She collects her, uh, recording, if you go in and record a deed or anything you record with her office, she collects that, she collects that. If you can make a copy out of her book, she gets money for copies, and so, anything she collects all month long, you know, she has it broken down, and then she ha- and by statute, it has to go into, some of that money is designated to go into certain accounts, preservation, dossies.
And how we did it there is, we all have cash vouchers that we write out, and then we take them to the clerk's office, and she deposits them into.
Treasurer's office.
I mean, the treasurer's office, thank you. The treasurer's office and deposits.
But I don't mind. She's just, she's been there there.
Go on her, she's got a hundred and thirty dollars in copies, one dollar certification, somebody must've wanted one of their copies certified, and then.
It's not a trust thing, it's just.
Sales land to somebody else, they have to pay so much, a thousand dollars on their doss.
And part of that goes to the state, part is there, and it's kind of broken down for a lot.
And then Dean's Killians is a real complicated one, because by statute, hers goes to, I don't know how many funds, fifty maybe, I don't know, everybody gets a little piece of the pie, a little piece of the pie.
Hello, I need you again, Steve. It's, it's a maze, an obstacle course.
Yeah.
Did, did, did you, did we move on that one?
No, we have not. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the monthly report subject audit.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the audit.
I'll second, approving the monthly officer's report subject audit.
Been moved, it's been seconded to approve monthly officer's reports subject audit. On favor?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Uh, item L, acknowledge monthly jail report, December twenty-eighteen.
This is your attorney.
We got it.
You got it? Okay. This is the jail week, this is, this, he has to turn in a deal every month that tells us, uh, who's in his jail, because he's got to account for his money that he spends. It's kind of how they do that, so.
You still have. Now, you do know why that jail report was established for the board, because the board, to show the board how their money was being spent, that they provided every sheriff to pay for food. That's why I'm curious why we even do a report anymore, since, because I don't think the boards are required to do that anymore.
No, I don't. You know, this, I think it's still in the statute, that's where they change one part of the statute in one area, and they don't change, we got so many statutes that contradict each other.
Oh, you're right.
And that's what these, I think that's, I think you're probably, that's one of these. I think you're one of these.
Yeah, because based on the first twenty inmates, the board would give the sheriff X number of dollars per mil, and then beyond twenty, it went down to, yeah.
So, if you don't get money, you don't have to do the report?
I don't know, it's easy to do. It doesn't matter.
It used to, before you were sheriff, it used to come attached to the blanket purchase order for the food. That's where we'd find it.
Oh, really?
It was attached to the.
All the darn.
To the, the food report, so then you'd say, here's your X dollars that you, yeah, for documentation, and here's what you spent on your food, and that's where it used to be attached, so.
Okay, we acknowledge that, but we need a way to, okay. Item N, twenty-eleventeen Annual Commissary Report for Sheriff Sterling, third title nineteen S O. Okay. We're gonna give this our best shot, because this is something I've never done, since I've been sheriff. And when the audit, you know, we had our audit. Yeah. And this was one of the findings, and my question to him was, I don't know, I really don't know what to produce. So, I looked up this state statute, and that's all it says. Required by January fifteenth of each year to give an annual report to the board on the commissary. That's it. That's it. So, I went into our, you know, Tiger Commissary is the, is our commissary company, and I went into the, the, uh, accounting side of that, looked at all the different accounting reports that I can pull up and type dates in, and nothing really fits. So, what I've brought to you.
I don't like the looks of that folder. Oh, no, it's not as thick as it looks.
There's two of them. So, what I, what I thought really you guys may be more interested in, these, this is the bank account for the commissary account for the fiscal year, and, and I've got every bank statement from the bank, and then I've also got the, um, computer statement that, from Tiger's program, internal programs of every transaction in the account, to show that every month has balance. So, the bank at Medford, I have balanced every month to the penny with Tiger. So, 'cause you know, the years previous, there was seven thousand dollars that were gone, weren't gone, nobody knew what happened to them prior to, to my administration. So, this goes back to November of two thousand fifteen, and when I have been able to balance to the penny every month since.
So, these are from November twenty fifteen to January twenty, or Jan- twenty eighteen?
Mm-huh. Yes.
To January twenty eighteen?
So, if you wanna look at them, I'll slide these folders down. So if you want to look at them, I'll slide these folders down.
Um, yeah, we'll look at, are we supposed to, you're supposed to present them, are we supposed to just acknowledge them?
It just says, present an annual report.
Present it. So we, you did, so we don't have to move, we're just saying you present.
I think that's right. I think it's just documentation showing that, but we just acknowledge what we did.
Yeah, so we don't, so let's look at his books. So since he took the time to present it, let's take at least a look at it.
I mean, I tried to print on it, and I'm like, yeah, that really doesn't fit. At least you'll know there's no money missing now, you know?
Yeah, if I remember the audit deals.
That's a discount on your, from there. And then here's the rest of it.
Didn't you just finally end up opening a whole new account?
Yes, and actually, I paid for more two minutes.
Yeah, so you could get it squared away, right?
I mean, that's my initial request.
Okay. That's where you started. That's why it's November of twenty fifteen, right?
Started with the four. Twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Sixteen. Twenty, November twenty sixteen, okay.
But anyway, yeah, everything from that new account forward.
Okay. Okay. And then that, and then that's the.
This is our new fiscal year now.
That you got it, okay.
And then I'll move into this, start the next fiscal year.
Okay, so this one was actually goes to June of twenty eighteen.
Yes.
June. So November fifteenth to June of eighteen, yeah.
Gotcha. And this one here goes forward. And then this is July to come.
Got you.
Right, July starts here. So this is, yeah.
So Scott, you, for your segregation duties, and I remember you wrote it in your auditor's report, that one of you collects the money, someone else counts it and makes a.
I haven't written a receipt for money in, since this time.
So someone receives it, someone else deposits it, someone reconciles it, so you get all different people doing different things.
Any money that comes in, whether it be in the mail or on an inmate, the dispatcher jailer receipts, they secure it, put it in the lockbox. I know the one that has a key. So mornings, I get there, I pull money out, I make a deposit slip, one of my daytime deputies takes that to the bank, and then when the bank account records come in, then I reconcile it with the computer side. That's good.
Sounds like a good system. Sounds like a good system.
Well, that ought to get the auditor.
Is it the same?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Real pleased with that.
Is it the same on the payroll ledger? I need to do some.
Two?
Four through, and I was just going to look maybe at one. How much is your paperwork?
Four, oh, I have to look at the bank account. That's going to be close. I have to reconcile December still. I just got the statement at the end of last week.
But anything that comes in and goes out, I mean, that's up to date, that's up to date.
All right.
So let's check that too, and make sure that my figures are with your bank statement, because we don't get those.
Oh, this will be different than the bank account there.
Okay.
Oh, is it, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I think that would be overkill. Yes. I mean, I, what do you think about it?
I think I would take the last.
Maybe, maybe the first one, maybe the first month and the last month to show what it was. Where it was, and then each time do the first month and the last month.
Okay.
Yeah. He's got the records on it, so.
And they're all just bank records anyways, and we needed to obtain them, we could from the bank.
Scott, when you reconcile, in your program, do you have a program that can print out your reconciliation page? Is that in here, or?
Yeah, it's, well, just the last page, I want to show that it balances.
Okay, show me where that, okay. I just want to look at that. Yeah, okay, okay.
This here is actually.
This is your deal, that you're, this is what you're printing out, right?
This is what, this is what I print off.
This is what you print off.
From Tiger's side. And see, the only reason I don't print every page is because.
They print it back.
Yeah, it's a waste of paper just to show everybody's name. But I do show that, what Bank Seven shows? Yeah. And what Tiger, the company Tiger shows that should be in the account? Balance, balance.
And do you have to enter the Bank Seven, so you have to enter the Bank Seven, so it basically tells you that you're balanced with your bank?
You see where I go, I make sure and check it off, and I sure that's, I can shoot that. But that's everything that comes in. That's including all the deposits that inmates, families make online, which go to the bank. So I don't, it just.
You mean, if, 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 if I was in jail sending one of, add money to my account, she'd do that online? She wouldn't bring it to you?
No, no, no.
But, so, but, okay, but let me ask you this. But does it, does, that doesn't give them access to your bank account, by?
What they do is they go to tigercommissary dot com.
Oh, Tiger, okay.
They go to Grant County Jail.
Okay.
And they click, and it pulls up a listing, right? So they find their family member, they click add money to that family member.
Okay.
And then it goes right into the bank account.
Okay, then they send you a notice that says.
Yeah, on my, on my bank statement.
Okay.
It shows.
But evidently, how do you know that inmate John or Joe has money? I mean, if, if, okay, they tell you.
I pull up Tiger on my computer.
Every day?
No, like it didn't, reconcile, check register. Starting balance, starting date, any balance, every time I get my statement. And then Tiger has all those uploaded.
Okay.
So you don't know that Tiger uploads.
Tiger uploads it back. And it balances.
Okay. But then you got someone else that's actually saying, I want to order all this food, and somebody else is saying, well, you either got the money or you don't. Someone else is watching that part of it. Okay, got you.
Yeah, they have the phones inside their cells, they pick up, they have a PIN number, and then they make their orders. So all, like, every Monday morning, we pull up Tiger Commissary and hit submit orders. And I, if you hit that button, and it shows all the orders that are pending, that everybody's ordered in the jail. And then we have to submit it from downstairs to send it to the warehouse.
And then they log in.
And then the warehouse deals them. Okay. I noticed on this, you go down here and that name, and then all of a sudden it starts printing the payable to you, and it prints their address on there for a while. And then, you see, oh, yes, go down here, and then all of a sudden it starts printing their address, and then it quits over here again. So who knows, who knows why. Okay. I think I'll do it.
I think he's got it figured out.
I do too.
What do they charge you to, 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 do you get a percentage of the, of the sales?
Yes.
Is that how you generate money?
Yes, yes.
So that helps pay for your.
Right.
All this that you happen to do.
Yes. Yeah, I appreciate that. Slowly get these things checked out. Okay, we acknowledge the commissary.
Do you care if I should understand some of the stuff, or we, and then I'll bring it back to you, you sent over recently?
I thought maybe just the first page and last page, just that we know that we've looked at this, we've looked at everything between the first page and the last, or, or, that's all we want, the first page and last page. We don't want any of the other stuff, just to document what we looked at. And Cindy, really, just that first book, because the other one is his current one, because that one he's working on now, we don't, he'll present that to us next January.
So this one here?
Yeah, just the first page and the last page of that one.
Got you, okay.
Okay, item N, state expenditure for DA's office for December twenty eighteen. We have it here, Grant County. Oh, I'd have to look at my other book, yeah. Yeah. Because this is Bank Seven, it's not county. You see what I'm saying? Okay, okay. Eight hundred seventeen dollars and ninety six cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the state expenditure for the DA's office reimbursement for December twenty eighteen in the amount of eight hundred seventeen ninety-six.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Aye.
Just to show us what, and get reimbursement, so he gets POs just like we do, but then we have to send it all back to the state, so she makes copies of everything that shows that we paid, and so it's like, just one that wants to pay, so, Acre's phone bill, the association dues, supplies, and stuff like that, so this month, we're not in that much. And he's on the chair as the owner, signs that.
Okay. Okay, item O, state payroll claim voucher for election board secretary December twenty eighteen in the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents.
I would move to approve the state payroll claim voucher reimbursement for the state, for the election board secretary for December twenty eighteen for two thousand five hundred fifty twelve.
We have a second. Been moved and been seconded to approve the payroll voucher for two thousand five hundred fifty dollars and twelve cents. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Aye.
This is all the way we pay, and the state only pays a, it is a percentage, but two a maximum. So it's just by statute that they do.
How much we receive on the percentage. Okay.
And then she's got, and then she, then you count.
Okay.
Part of hers, but we don't give, we don't give that. Yeah, we get twenty five fifty out of the three thousand that we spend.
Okay, item P, Liberty Mutual Security, the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company, for the contract bond status query on behalf of Kyler Construction. And this here lists it out, it's, it's a statement, has a contract been completed? No. If completed, it's blank, if not completed, state, and it says, probably, completion date is the third and first of twenty nineteen, the amount paid to the contractor to date is one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Item four, has work progressed satisfactorily? Yes. Are there any unsatisfied claims or liens on the file? No.
Wait a minute, there is a lien.
Not on Kyler.
Oh, not on Kyler, okay, excuse me. Got you, got you. Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, and we'll have to finish, the amount withheld to retain the percentage. The contract price is one million, three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and.
Paid one, so, one point one five, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So what are they wanting us to, what are they wanting us to do?
It's a, it's a, it's a bond, they're just, they're the ones holding the bond for Kyler Construction.
So they just want to, they want a update on the bond liability?
Just, I think it probably was coming due, so, just a.
So do we sign, so they want us to sign?
There is a place.
Well, I would make a motion to sign the Liberty Mutual Security Ohio Casualty Contract Bond Status Query on behalf of Kyler Construction.
It's been moved and seconded to sign the bond query on behalf of Kyler Construction for Grant County. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit. Aye.
Aye.
We'll all sign this.
Okay.
Sign above me if you want to.
I don't want to.
I should have signed it up there. Okay, item Q, revocation of requisition officer Pat Wrong for the following entities, all districts and county general government, commissioner's office, and exiled and equalization board, economic development authority, officer for District Three.
I would move to revoke him as requisition officer from all entities as presented.
I will second that. It's been moved and been seconded to revoke Pat Wrong as requisitioning officer for the county commissioners for government, pre-equalization board, economic development authority, and all the officers for District Three and all districts. We have a vote on that? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Scott, around.
Hi, Scott, are you here where you could come and visit with the board about the removal of the AC heating units? Thank you.
All right. You can sign up there too. Do you realize you these all have Pat Wrong's name on them?
Oh, Hannah, I'm sorry, I didn't do those, and I didn't know, I didn't look at them.
Scott?
Good morning.
First sign of that petition, last, and this last, and here.
Scott, would you sign the page? Did you sign, did you sign a law?
Here, I'll bring it to you, Scott.
Okay, we're down to, I guess, deep inside of that, down to item R. Consideration of wall heating and AC units being removed from the courthouse.
There are possibly about twelve wall units. One of them is on the third floor, electric extension, and it's bad, it has a bad motor. So, going to be a total of eleven of them that are actually working. That will function anyway before the other process came in. I went and looked around, I could probably get three, moved some stuff around in my shop, I could probably store three of them in my shop. The other parts, the other eight, if we can, down in the sheriff's office basement, there's a bunch of shelvings, metal shelvings and stuff. I talked to the GC, and had him look at the heat things with some one-inch plywood and stuff, we can build a couple of shelvings and store the remaining eight down there so that they'll still be on the grounds for replacement issues or anything like that. The bad one, once we get it removed out, I'm going to try to take some stuff off of there that is still usable. And I have one that I already took apart in the shop, and I've got another one in the shop that I've already took apart, not took apart, but am getting ready to take apart, like, the little computer modems and everything else, and the boards and stuff that are still Like, the little computer modems and everything else, and the boards and stuff that are still in good shape. It's just that the motor went bad, or the boiler went bad, or maybe something like that. We can use those as part of parts as long as they're in good shape. I think so. That's, uh, pretty much, uh, the other thing that we didn't know for sure, if we, since we were storing them, if we need to, uh, surplus them.
Put them on.
Or, or anything like that, or. So that way I'd know to even get some numbers off of them or anything else, so we know that we have these.
That system's all put in as one unit, probably wasn't individualized.
But maybe since we're gonna store them for use over, just to track, for tracking purposes, maybe we ought to, maybe ought to.
I think it would be best to.
Inventorying, just so we know where they are. And, yeah, I, I can use, Cindy, I, I'll have to go to the state auditorium site and see if there's such a number for something like that.
Okay, okay. I mean, it's not all H. Sharon, like, and ask her what she says, okay?
Yeah, I mean.
But I think we can get them all stored on, um, the courthouse property without having to worry about trying to figure out other places for them to go or something. Uh, one other thing, uh, we went for sure, there's four bad units up there on the fourth floor. We didn't know what, uh, we need to do with those. Uh, they, uh, took stuff off of them over the years to, to replace the wall units, so there's, they're pretty much didn't bear everything, so all they're doing is just setting up there, so.
Well, they let us, would the construction company allow us to?
I can talk to Larry about that tomorrow.
See if he'd let us put them in there?
Yeah, if he can, we just want, I wanna make sure we got an okay on that, that it's good to dispose of those, get those off the fourth floor, and, and get them out of the way, so.
The, uh, we, we went to central heat and air inside. We used to have all these wall units, but the sheriff's department still has wall units.
So, but it'd be hard to add up there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
These will be, there'll still be completed units and stuff, so what they're doing, one of their units.
They're hard to find.
They can, they can take this unit out and just put this unit right.
I understand. I was like, why are we keeping them if we're doing, I understand now. They're the home for them, maybe.
Yeah, they're the home for them, guaranteed.
And they're probably not heat to replace, because we have to try and find.
No, we've had to pay pretty, pretty high dollars for.
Yes, we have, and stuff even for new, and it was pretty expensive just to have them new when you install them.
So that sounds good to me, that we don't need action.
No, we don't need no action, we're just doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. Item A.
I'll, I'll start by, if it's okay, Alex is on her way, uh, and I have received emails. And I called them, I did not print them out, but, um, she did very well. She completed all of the projects, uh, for all of the, uh, lessons. Um, and I did get updates from them, and they were very pleased. She was very involved and did very well interacting with the others. And I did hear her at times in the back room, because they have conference calls and things, so all that, that's Alex.
Okay, Alex, we're down to the NACO Leadership Academy presentation from Alex, written after completion of the program.
Okay. Okay.
I'll turn the floor over to you.
Hey, um, the academy was a twelve-week program. Um, it was designed to educate in leadership, organizational development, change management, negotiation and collaboration, and effective business communication in county government. Um, it required between three to five hours of commitment each week and collaboration with other county employees across the country. I think we had about fifty people in the entirety of the class, but in my group, we had eleven or twelve. So we got to do a meeting, um, once a week where we discussed, um, whatever topic we were doing for that week. The main takeaway from the class that I got was the power of positive communication. Um, you communicate with your attitude, your voice, and your work ethic. And being an effective leader comes not only from the title that you carry, but from the actions that you take every day. Um, I thought the class was challenging, goal-driven, and thought-provoking, and I enjoyed getting to work in partnership with others who had the same challenges as I did. And I appreciated the input of those with more work experience. Um, I believe you learned leadership is a loss in self-interest and a gain for a positive, effective work environment. I learned a lot. Um, we, after we finished the course, um, we got a book written by Colin Powell. Um, they had a lot of videos, um, that he did as well. And we got a certificate of completion, and we also got a challenge coin.
Oh, wow, what's there about a challenge coin? You had a friend who met on the wall.
Yeah, your idea.
That is really cool.
That is.
I'd hate for you to lose that.
By the way, we're dead.
What coin?
That is very cool.
Very good.
Very, very good. Thank you for participating. Uh, uh, we had a conference call Friday, uh, NACO Leadership, our executive board. There was eight of us with Matt Chase, and we talked about that, and was discussing with some of the people. And they said, a lot of them put in a lot more hours than they thought that it was gonna take to begin with. Most people, you know, they said, if you didn't do five hours, you probably weren't doing all your job, doing all of this. Because it was very driven, and you, you couldn't miss one time because you would be too far behind. They said you really had to have a commitment for the full and entire time, but, um, have, well received, and, and thank you for doing that. Uh, I'm kind of excited, I hope, and perhaps there might be other people, you know, who might get together and think, if, if there's somebody else who didn't think might benefit from that program, I'd certainly welcome your input, you know.
I think if, if Dusty had time, I think that she would benefit from it. It was, um, I learned a lot from it.
Yeah, that's, right now, they're doing a, uh, one on I T., you know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what are, you know, if somebody's really into I T., and that, that they're gonna do that, and some different things, so. They're gonna try to change, you know, have something different, you know, every twelve weeks, you know, with a break in there. They're trying to give more people, uh, um, one guy in North Dakota, they sent their maintenance man through, and he was really, thought it was a really good program too, so it can cover a wide, wide variety of things. And you guys were kind of a guinea pig. We've got a lot of feedback on things we need to change, and I hope you gave them your feedback to what, what, what you could change to improve it and to do some different things, so. But thank you very much for participating, and I appreciate it.
Very good, we appreciate you doing it.
We're all good now.
Thanks for your presentation. Item T, road crossing permits. None, all right. Cindy, do you have any, uh, new business?
I do not.
No new business? Dean, do you have any new business?
Um, no, not that I know of. I have, uh.
Okay, Cindy, do you have any?
Not, not.
Nope, I have no new business. Bring us down to item ten, commissioner's comments. Dean, what do you have?
Well, uh, like I said, with this being about the wettest month we've had in a long time, uh, we don't, we barely get the roads done, and then they get rained on and start over again. Uh, so we're one rain away from starting over. I, uh, went to the Vance Air Force Base Joint Land Use Study, and, uh, they had several flyers here, and their study program that they finished up with, how it's gonna affect Grant County, and any sort of thing. I have some flyers, if y'all are interested, I'll look them up.
How's it gonna affect us?
Well, uh, like I said, you know, with it being my first, uh, first meeting, uh, you know, it, uh, I was playing a whole lot of catch-up, and basically, it's a, it's an umbrella program that keeps Vance Air Force Base flying, and, uh, they have a bunch of people on, on staff that, uh, this major design group, uh, they, uh, pretty much, uh, if you wanted to put something in, uh, like Tagleman Air Force Base out here, uh, it was pointed out, like, if, if a landowner wanted to put in a, uh, a honey cabin or something like that, then they would have to kind of get with, uh, the landowner, say that's probably not a good deal. And, and I think there's kind of a go-between as far as keeping, uh, the air force flying and, uh, wind, wind towers and stuff out of their way.
Does it have a mild diameter?
Yeah, they have maps of, uh, in this, these little folders I brought you. They had, uh, some maps and stuff on the, how far away it is and, and the impact of it. It mainly is, uh, the western side of Grant County. But I just thought it's.
I'm actually on that passport too, and I finished a couple meetings, but Grant County, yes, we are involved, if I may, we are involved in it, but we're kind of, like you said, on the outskirts of it, and it really just kind of affects the stuff over on the west side of the county. And from what I kind of, you know, I went through like an interview thing with them when I first went and all that. And, uh, but basically, they're this company, I think, just like you just said, to keep the airspace free so that they can do their training and all of that.
And basically, all they, you know, they have, but if there, if there's a project that comes up that's in the way of the fly, flight line, then, then they work to.
Work with that entity to.
Yeah.
Figure out the best.
They're wanting to, uh, basically, uh, Grant County say that they approve of it, but not, uh, totally, I mean, you know, so that there's an opening there to work through any problems. There wasn't our agreement to, uh, just basically say, uh, it's a good idea, but we're not gonna just give you free rate. And like I said, here's some. Well, that's kind of a quick information of it.
Sure beats them reading that, doesn't it?
If you wanna read it, tell us at the front. But I thought I'd share that with you. Other than that, uh, you know, we're still working on equipment, uh, doing what roads we can to keep them, uh, as great as, you know, it's kind of pushing, and, uh, that's about all I've got.
Okay. Cindy, what do you have?
Oh, God, it's a busy week. All right, tomorrow, we, we have our Grant County Economic Development Forty meeting here at eleven, is that correct?
Well, I have.
Yes.
Is it not posted? Get it.
No, we're not. Okay, so I will, I will, and you just said that a little ago, you just didn't even click with.
Well, I did.
Well, is the set on fifteen?
Yeah, yeah, for somehow, we got off on those. We usually have those, the same on Mondays, but I looked through there, you got everyone. I would, but you can't, I mean.
Not always hand.
Well, you can re, yeah, I'd rather have it on the day we're already here at eleven.
See, mine says the six, seventeen of December, uh, January.
That's the industrial development.
Okay.
That's the industrial development, but the Grant County econo, that's the educational one. The economic development is two, is the fifteen, but Cindy, what we could.
Right, okay.
And, and we have to have that once a year, we have to, because we have to reorganize. We one time failed to do it, and we had to go see the judges.
Do it as a special meeting?
Yes, one then.
So then I'll just set up a special meeting next week?
Yeah, Monday, that, or Tuesday. Yeah, have it eleven, yeah, 'cause we don't meet on Monday. Yeah, just have it set up as a special at eleven then.
Okay, that's the economic.
Well, the economic being's gonna be moved to the twenty-second.
Yes. Okay, and I will, I'll post it Tuesday.
And you can have everything on the agenda, except you can't have new business.
Right, which I know there's nothing going on either way.
But we'll have to have the, re, uh, reorganize the board.
Okay, okay.
We usually have our boards follow the same as, it just keeps it simpler.
Right, okay, okay.
So.
That'll be at eleven?
That'll be eleven, for economic development. And I, the, over, over minutes, um, and I can't think of anything else. Um, well, you might wanna give us an update on the financial, we got four dollars and.
Sixty-nine cents.
So we'll have a report on the four dollars and sixty-nine cents, so it'll be pretty basic.
Okay, awesome.
All right, so we, and then I do have my NACO Central Region call, post call tomorrow, and Oklahoma's actually presenting. We're going to hear from, uh, Darius Stacy, county commissioner of Higgin County, and his emergency manager, correct, or George, um, Mayhem, I think is his name. And they're gonna talk about the, it might be something that you guys wanna listen in on. Cindy, if the new rules and rights on FEMA grants on that, is that, you should've got email on it.
I, I didn't tell you guys, I had, and, and you can't expect it. I lost all my emails, code back to December twenty-second of last year. Everything is gone. And then all of a sudden, it showed up, but only some of it.
Okay, well, you, this morning, Gene Wallace sent it out.
Okay.
So this morning, Gene Wallace sent it out, so anyway, Cindy, I'll send you that link if you wanna listen in.
Yeah, I will.
So we're gonna hear on the new deals on the FEMA deal. Uh, that commutator, we'll have that instructions tomorrow at nine-thirty. Uh, Wednesday, their C E D meeting in Alvin, we'll be hearing, uh, I, I talked to the offices of Peterson and Pfeiffer, and both of them will be at that C E D legislative meeting to talk about.
Very good, very good.
So that will be Wednesday. And then Thursday, um, I'm going to my Wheatland R C and D meeting. You, Cindy, you do have that industrial authority, that's the bankers.
Okay, yeah.
And, um, I also have a NACO transportation call that day. Are you gonna try to go to that Western Oklahoma workforce development deal on Thursday?
Well, I've got this one here to go through, and then we'll.
Well, this is the bankers, you don't have to, I mean, that's, you can come to that one, but we're not on that board.
Okay.
We're not on that board. Oh, and you got a C D S A meeting today?
I got a C D S A meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
At eight-thirty.
Okay.
And then the other one is the workforce joint.
Well, that's, well, that, Pat was on that workforce development one, and that's that one, it's gonna be at nine o'clock and ended at the Votek in room two-twelve, and you're gonna do a teleconference. He was on that board, so if you wanna go listen in.
Room two-twelve.
Two-twelve, at the Votek, mhm.
And that's tomorrow?
No, that's Thursday.
Thursday.
Do you want me to put that in your call-in scene?
Uh, yeah, I'll be there.
And that you have C, you have a C D A meeting.
Thursday, room two-twelve for workforce.
Yeah, work, uh, workforce development, so. And I don't know about you guys, but this, these, these slow rains have just about melted my shale roads, and we had school buses stuck, and we, that Friday, we had quite a mess with vehicles. It was so slick, just vehicles and torches, so, um, I'm probably gonna try to put some rock out. So that, been working on, trying to get some money put together on some rock, and I don't know. With two trucks, I may try to take bids on hauling, I don't know what I'm gonna do. Looking at my money today to see, but, um, I'll just drive slow, and, you know, it's the old, in the old days, we all had mud tires, and there's no such thing as a mud tire now. And, I mean, they, they call it a mud tire, but it's not an aggressive tire that helps you staying on the road. You know, these hot, tires aren't built for, for camp, for country roads anymore. They're just built mainly for highways, and that's.
All terrain now.
Yeah, all terrain, and they're just a, they're not a very severe tire. And if you want a severe tire, you're gonna have to get a biased tire, there is no radials out there, so, uh, you know, people. When I was growing up, it was money you still went, because you had tires that did it, but today, you don't, so it's just, it's different. That's my comments.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, my comments are, yes, it did rain, we had a, a slow rain, which is very beneficial to the crops and wonderful for the farmers, but it's a disaster for the commissioners. And, you know, we've been putting out rock, uh, on roads and things, but people need to realize that this rock takes a while to settle down, and it needs to be packed down, and the more. And the more you pack it when you lay the rock, the better it is. But we all know that it doesn't settle until it gets a rain or two on it.
Or three.
Or three, yes. And I had a gentleman up by Manchester that gripped about a road that we put rock on and it was terrible, he wanted it off there. And after the rock settled down, he is on the exact opposite side of the fence, he thinks that's wonderful. So, anybody that's been around this knows that it has to settle a little bit. And I know whenever you come in and it's first improved, you think that's gonna be a fix? It's gonna be great? Some people don't see it that way because they, they don't wait till it gets down the road finished where it's settled.
That can take a year.
It can take a while, yes, it can.
It can take a year to get that, those roads, once you put any new material on for it, to get packed in and settled down.
Yes. But we're all in the same boat, you know, people are getting down muddy roads. I called Dean yesterday about a problem that was brought to my attention on a road he had. And the lady said her son went down the road and she just hoped that they didn't tow his vehicle until they got it out. She said she didn't have any idea why he was going down that road. We've all been there, we've had children, employees and everybody else that's driven down a road and tore it up because they thought it was fun. And then when they get on our side of the deal, they realize it's not so fun. And it costs the county money. But anyway, we're going through the rain deal too. We've been working on service and trucks and traders and things. We've been digging shale at the shale pit. We also have gotten the final word on the water line at Clyde. We think that that's gonna be okay. They presented and Cindy's gonna put forth a little deal that the CED is sending over estimates on the water line relocation for that road. But it looks like sometime in the summertime, we're gonna get that approved and get it started. So, that's very good news for Grant County. We have a CED meeting over at Alvin Wednesday. Cindy, I appreciate you contacting Peterson and Piper about that. We're supposed to have representation from all of our legislators across our 15 counties that are included over there, so I think it'll be a good deal. We had an, CED had an employee quit over there that was doing inspections. Clay, we hated to see him go, but continuing on. We have an opportunity to haul in, hire an engineer, another engineer, which would be beneficial because when our last engineer moved on, took another job, it left us shorthanded and we divided that duties up between the two remaining engineers. And it has made them stick the notes that write stuff. They've not involved that, they've all sort of done it. So, we're going to be discussing hiring another engineer over there. We had an inch and a half of rain. And like I said, I think it's wonderful, but it takes a little bit to get packed in and stuff. Outside of that, that's about it. That's enough. Bring us down to item 11, adjournment. I made a motion, it'll be your turn.
I will second that.
At 11:35. Have a motion to adjourn on first and second. Do you have it in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob it.
Aye.
Aye.